Can I ask screens on, please? Can I ask screens on, please? Thanks very much. Welcome to the eighth meeting of City Council, a virtual meeting held during Thanks very much. Welcome to the eighth meeting of City Council, a virtual meeting held during the COVID-19 emergency. I will invite viewers to check the city website for the COVID-19 emergency. I will invite viewers to check the city website for current details of COVID-19 service impacts, current details of COVID-19 service impacts, and remind you that meetings can be viewed and remind you that meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The City of London is committed to The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, communication supports for council, standing, or advisory committee meetings and information standing, or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489 extension 2425. or 519 661 2489 extension 2425. Colleagues, I'll look for any disclosures of pecuniary Colleagues, I'll look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest. interest. Counselor Pelosi. Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to disclose interest on item 2.8 on the Community Thank you, your worship. I'd like to disclose interest on item 2.8 on the Community and Protective Services Agenda. and Protective Services Agenda.
2.8 on Community and Protective Services. Thank you. Any other disclosures? 2.8 on Community and Protective Services. Thank you. Any other disclosures? Can you clarify, if you would please, Counselor Pelosi, the nature of the conflict? Can you clarify, if you would please, Counselor Pelosi, the nature of the conflict?
Yeah, the conflict has to do with the transportation subsidies, and we do benefit Yeah, the conflict has to do with the transportation subsidies, and we do benefit from the subsidized youth transit, as my son uses them to go to Central, and I've made from the subsidized youth transit, as my son uses them to go to Central, and I've made the Chair of the Committee aware of this conflict as well. the Chair of the Committee aware of this conflict as well.
So noted. Thank you. So noted. Thank you. Colleagues, we have four recognitions. I'd like to start with Counselor Hopkins, please. Colleagues, we have four recognitions. I'd like to start with Counselor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, your worship. Nature Canada recently announced Canada's first four certified Thank you, your worship. Nature Canada recently announced Canada's first four certified bird-friendly cities, and the City of London is one of them, along with Vancouver, Toronto, bird-friendly cities, and the City of London is one of them, along with Vancouver, Toronto, and Calgary. So, for us to be recognized, we had to, as a city, demonstrate how we reduce and Calgary. So, for us to be recognized, we had to, as a city, demonstrate how we reduce the threats to birds, provide communication and education to the community, as well as the threats to birds, provide communication and education to the community, as well as providing habitat programs and restoration for the birds in our city. Certification is providing habitat programs and restoration for the birds in our city. Certification is a badge of honor and a source of community pride that tells the world that your city a badge of honor and a source of community pride that tells the world that your city or the town takes action to help birds and reverse their declines in our own backyard. or the town takes action to help birds and reverse their declines in our own backyard. I'm so pleased that we're one of those cities. We are also doing a poll on London's favorite I'm so pleased that we're one of those cities. We are also doing a poll on London's favorite bird, so if you're interested in doing a poll, just go to www.birdfriendlylondon.ca-city-pride-poll bird, so if you're interested in doing a poll, just go to www.birdfriendlylondon.ca-city-pride-poll and pick your favorite bird. Thank you. and pick your favorite bird. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'll call on Counselor Kibaga, please. Thanks very much. I'll call on Counselor Kibaga, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Boys and Girls Club of London has provided 65 years Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Boys and Girls Club of London has provided 65 years of tremendous service and support to families across the city, and it has been a key community of tremendous service and support to families across the city, and it has been a key community partner. The club has also been an outstanding supporter of aging adults in London and surrounding partner. The club has also been an outstanding supporter of aging adults in London and surrounding areas for 34 years. Founded in 1956, it has opened a safe place for at-risk boys. What areas for 34 years. Founded in 1956, it has opened a safe place for at-risk boys. What started in a second-floor room at the Roosevelt branch of the Royal Canadian Legion has become started in a second-floor room at the Roosevelt branch of the Royal Canadian Legion has become both a landmark and anchor to the corner of Horton and Richmond Streets. From its humble both a landmark and anchor to the corner of Horton and Richmond Streets. From its humble beginnings, the club's mission was always to help children and youth discover and achieve beginnings, the club's mission was always to help children and youth discover and achieve their dreams. From being a school, a cigar factory, a union gas storage facility, the their dreams. From being a school, a cigar factory, a union gas storage facility, the building has been transformed to include two swimming pools, a large gym, a weight building has been transformed to include two swimming pools, a large gym, a weight room, meeting rooms, and a full recording studio to give our youth opportunities to room, meeting rooms, and a full recording studio to give our youth opportunities to explore their interests and to share their talents. Their summer camps are extremely explore their interests and to share their talents. Their summer camps are extremely popular in the community and give parents and children the ability to choose from several popular in the community and give parents and children the ability to choose from several themes, including arts and outdoors and athletics. They're passionate about giving themes, including arts and outdoors and athletics. They're passionate about giving back to back to community. In 1987, the club opened the Horton Streets Senior Center, an affordable community. In 1987, the club opened the Horton Streets Senior Center, an affordable recreational recreational club for aging adults, and it uses the buildings during the day when the club for aging adults, and it uses the buildings during the day when the children are at children are at school. The membership has increased to approximately 1,200 people. school. The membership has increased to approximately 1,200 people. The club has also grown to The club has also grown to provide transportation for adults 55 years and older to Horton Street provide transportation for adults 55 years and older to Horton Street and other day and other day programs in the city, helping keep thousands of seniors connected to important programs in the city, helping keep thousands of seniors connected to important activities. activities. During the pandemic year, they've experienced the same challenges that we all During the pandemic year, they've experienced the same challenges that we all have to keep have to keep up with their usual activities, but under the leadership of Chris Harvey, up with their usual activities, but under the leadership of Chris Harvey, their CEO, their CEO, and their commitment to the city, they continue to shine. Like the rest of and their commitment to the city, they continue to shine. Like the rest of the world, the the world, the club is looking forward to when we can fully reopen and welcome the club is looking forward to when we can fully reopen and welcome the community back to their community back to their building. However, they continue to provide opportunities for building. However, they continue to provide opportunities for community connection through community connection through the virtual. As the Ward Counselor, it gives me great the virtual. As the Ward Counselor, it gives me great pleasure to recognize an outstanding pleasure to recognize an outstanding achievement for our Boys and Girls Club of London, and achievement for our Boys and Girls Club of London, and I look forward to continuing I look forward to continuing to work with them as the BGC London. Congratulations on to work with them as the BGC London. Congratulations on your 65th year. your 65th year.
Well, thank you. I'm now going to go back to Counselor Hopkins. Well, thank you. I'm now going to go back to Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you again, your worship. We have many great community organizations that give Thank you again, your worship. We have many great community organizations that give back to the City of London, and I would like to recognize the Sikh, the London Sikh community back to the City of London, and I would like to recognize the Sikh, the London Sikh community here in London, and in particular, Gurmeet Mahota and the volunteers and high school here in London, and in particular, Gurmeet Mahota and the volunteers and high school students that are very active in giving back in the community. Last April was Sikh Heritage students that are very active in giving back in the community. Last April was Sikh Heritage Month, and it was an opportunity for the Sikh community to support homelessness as Month, and it was an opportunity for the Sikh community to support homelessness as well as setting up food stations. They've been doing this for years, not only through well as setting up food stations. They've been doing this for years, not only through the recovery, but they've been very active in the community. Recently, the Sikh community the recovery, but they've been very active in the community. Recently, the Sikh community has donated to the City of London 150,000 K95 masks, and they have been given to the five has donated to the City of London 150,000 K95 masks, and they have been given to the five community resource centers that we have here in the City of London. So I would like to community resource centers that we have here in the City of London. So I would like to thank them on behalf of City Council for their generous donation and also for making thank them on behalf of City Council for their generous donation and also for making our community stronger. Thank you. our community stronger. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor, and colleagues. As it is annually, it's my Well, thank you very much, Counselor, and colleagues. As it is annually, it's my honor to announce the winner of the Tim Hickman Award. I have the honor of having met the honor to announce the winner of the Tim Hickman Award. I have the honor of having met the Hickman family, and I know this is an opportunity for us not only to pay tribute to a fine Hickman family, and I know this is an opportunity for us not only to pay tribute to a fine young man who was a city employee, but at the same time, to talk in terms of work safety. young man who was a city employee, but at the same time, to talk in terms of work safety. So today, colleagues, I'm pleased to announce that Skylar Sunisso is the 2021 recipient So today, colleagues, I'm pleased to announce that Skylar Sunisso is the 2021 recipient of the Tim Hickman Memorial Health and Safety Scholarship. I should tell you that Skylar of the Tim Hickman Memorial Health and Safety Scholarship. I should tell you that Skylar is not here in person, but instead is watching this presentation through live streaming. is not here in person, but instead is watching this presentation through live streaming. This annual $3,000 scholarship for students in an occupational or public health and safety-related This annual $3,000 scholarship for students in an occupational or public health and safety-related program was established in 2006 by the City of London and QP Locals 101 and 107 as a program was established in 2006 by the City of London and QP Locals 101 and 107 as a tribute to employee Tim Hickman, who died in service to the community at the young tribute to employee Tim Hickman, who died in service to the community at the young age of 21. As an essential frontline worker in our healthcare system, Skylar has shown age of 21. As an essential frontline worker in our healthcare system, Skylar has shown his commitment to the health and safety of our community already. So thank you for his commitment to the health and safety of our community already. So thank you for the work you're doing now as a personal support worker and the work you will continue the work you're doing now as a personal support worker and the work you will continue to do as you receive your nursing degree. The Tim Hickman Memorial Health and Safety to do as you receive your nursing degree. The Tim Hickman Memorial Health and Safety Scholarship recognizes the importance of raising awareness of occupational health Scholarship recognizes the importance of raising awareness of occupational health and safety. Skylar's commitment to health and safety and his education and career path and safety. Skylar's commitment to health and safety and his education and career path demonstrates that we all win when we look out for the safety of each other. So on behalf demonstrates that we all win when we look out for the safety of each other. So on behalf of City Council, I'd like to honor and congratulate Skylar on this very prestigious scholarship. of City Council, I'd like to honor and congratulate Skylar on this very prestigious scholarship. So colleagues, that's what I have for recognitions at this point. Thank you. So colleagues, that's what I have for recognitions at this point. Thank you. I am not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public. However, as is I am not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public. However, as is our practice, I'm looking for a change in order of item four, which is our confidential our practice, I'm looking for a change in order of item four, which is our confidential session, to move that and the Eighth Report of Council and close session to after stage session, to move that and the Eighth Report of Council and close session to after stage 13 bylaws. Do I have a mover? I have Counselor Van Mirbergen, seconded by Counselor Turner. 13 bylaws. Do I have a mover? I have Counselor Van Mirbergen, seconded by Counselor Turner. Let's turn to the screen and we'll vote. Let's turn to the screen and we'll vote.
Sir, I'm not sure if Ms. List like powers waiting for me to close the vote. Sorry, but that closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you. I was wondering the reticence of the clerk, clerk, and thank you for doing that. You being mindful, as always. So, colleagues, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held May 4, 2021. I'll look for a mover, please. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Any discussion? Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, under Communications and Petitions, item six, specifically 6.1, we have two items related to 11, 3.2 of the Eighth Report of the Planning Environment Committee, 1 Hyde Park Road and 1521 Sunningdale Road West, and under 6.2, we have one item related to five, 2.4 of the Eighth Report of Community and Protective Services Committee having to do with the property standards bylaw. I'll look for a motion to refer those items in the particular areas of committee that they should be dealt with. Do I have a mover? Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Thanks very much. Any discussion? See none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor Van Mirbergen and Counselor Turner. Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. There are notice has been given, which turns us to item eight, the Reports section under 8.1, the Eighth Report of the Planning Environment Committee. I'd call on Counselor Squire, please.
Thank you very much, your worship. I'm aware that item 11 and item 12 will both have to be polled. There are motions related to those two items, and item 11 was a split vote. Other than that, I haven't heard of any other items to be polled.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any other to be dealt with separately? Counselor Turner.
Item 10, if you could, please.
Item 10 it is. Any other items, colleagues? Back to you, Counselor Squire.
I'll put the balance of the items on the floor.
So that's been moved. Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Hopkins. Comments or questions on all items, with the exception of 10, 11, and 12? Counselor Turner.
Thank you. With respect to the number nine, the Plan Appeals Update, I'd just like to thank staff for the continued hard work in advancing negotiations and settlements with those sections under appeal. I think we're making great progress, as mentioned in the report. 97% of the London plan is now in force and effect. There are still some matters yet to be resolved, and I look forward to those being resolved quickly so that we can have the London plan as the official plan document for this city.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? See none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
The first item to be polled, which was polled, was item 10, an approval of surface parking lots at the address as set out in the agenda, and Counselor Turner called that matter, polled that matter, sorry.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Turner.
Just really quickly, I'll be voting against it. I'd imagine the rest of council will support, or many will, but the length of these extensions of temporary use are such that I think it's probably time to seek the highest and best use for these properties, and granting these temporary extensions don't accomplish that.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. As I said in committee, I will not be declaring pecuniary interest on this, as my shop has our own private parking lot for customers and staff. However, I would encourage my colleagues to support this. These parking lots are desperately needed for businesses and merchants, retail and restaurant, along Richmond Street, as well as employees of companies in the area. Also, for events in Victoria Park, many folks come from my ward and other wards that are not in the downtown to enjoy those events, and these parking lots are crucial to that. At this time in the pandemic and recovering from the economic hardship that's being experienced by so many, this would be the wrong time to take away this much-needed parking.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. So I have a question to staff. I believe it was this very parking lot that triggered the direction of staff some years ago to create the downtown parking strategy, and one of the reasons was to stop these ever-on-going, rolling, three-year exemptions for temporary use, which obviously the use has not been temporary. So what's the next step in that downtown parking strategy from the city staff point of view, from what's being driven forward by City Hall? We've got the strategy, and that gives us the knowledge to know where the parking is most needed in the downtown area. So we already did remove a temporary exemption from another lot that had low utilization that hadn't complied with site plan requirements over eight years' time. So what's happening next?
Would I look to Mr. Kotsfuss for that?
I believe so.
Go ahead, please.
Well, thank you, your worship. In the strategy, I believe there's approximately nine strategies identified or key recommendations that were put forward, if I recall, and it ranged from a multitude of initiatives, like the CIPs, which we're doing. Again, TZs, there was a discouragement within the downtown area. Now, this one falls outside of that downtown plan, but there was also the joint venture that we had sought out, the responding strategies put in place. So there's a number of other initiatives that are underway to implement the strategy, and that was outlined in the report back then, and we're continuing to do so moving forward.
Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you. I also was wondering, you know, this report, and I recognize that personnel have changed, but this report was slightly different. Every time these have come to us before, I believe it was contained right in that top part, the to, from, the subject, it always said exemption or rezoning, and it mentioned that this was a temporary-use parking lot, and I'm wondering why the format of this report has changed and why it wasn't more clearly showing right in that top part that this had to do with a parking lot exemption.
Mr. Kotsfuss.
I actually might ask Mr. Yeoman to assist with the report format and the template. I wasn't aware of the change.
Go ahead, Mr. Yeoman.
Thank you, through you, your worship. I don't believe there has been a formatting change. The recommendation does clearly state that's for temporary use. The summary request states it, and the purpose and effect of the recommended action stated as well. It may be that we didn't include it in the subject of the report. Perhaps that's something that's been inconsistently done over time, and so I'll take that back and discuss that with the team.
Anything else, Counselor?
Yeah, thank you for that, and I really do think nobody wants to make it more inconvenient for people to shop. Nobody wants to make it harder for businesses to do their thing. I would argue, having lived in Toronto and the Toronto area for 10 years, that London has plenty of downtown parking. It's just that Londoners, for some reason, don't want to walk more than two minutes from their car to their destination. Other cities, they're not as reticent to do that. I just want to urge staff to continue to go forward, but the problem with these parking lots is this is prime real estate. We see the outsized property tax assessment, and so the value to the City of London to get the highest and best use from these lands. We can't let them continue to sit fallow, and many of them in not very good condition, crumbling asphalt. They do not make our downtown look very good, and I just urge staff to approach this with a sense of urgency.
Thank you. Counselor Holst.
Oh, thank you, your worship. And I realize that John Palm parking lots being extended is a bone of contention for many counselors. I hope that they may turn out to be a silver lining for the film industry, because that is a very valuable commodity for people hoping to film in an urban center. So we'll see if that silver lining comes to pass as we sort of roll out the filming that's happening, and I'm excited to hear that there are some productions in the works. So thank you.
Thank you. I see no other speakers on our list, so we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries nine to five.
Counselor Squire.
Item 11 on the agenda, which was item 3.2 from the committee, which Hyde Park Road and 1521 Sunningdale Road West, this is a split vote at Committee Four to Two. Since the committee met, we received further information, one of which is a letter from the Thames Valley District School Board with regard to their plans. The second was information with regard to sewer connections and water connections from the applicants. So that's where the matter stands now, and I know there's a motion being brought forward for referral.
Indeed, there is. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. Yeah, this motion for referral was driven by that communication that Counselor Squire referenced from the Thames Valley District School Board. It has been circulated to council, and with your permission, Chair, I'd like to read it.
Go ahead.
That item 11, 3.2 of the Eighth Report of the Planning Environment Committee
That item eleven, three point two of the eighth report of the Planning and Environment Committee having to do with the application from Auburn Developments Inc. relating to the property located at twenty-six thirty-one Hyde Park Road and fifteen twenty-one Sunningdale Road West be referred back to civic administration in order to provide an opportunity for discussions to be held with the Thames Valley District School Board to receive details on the board's requirements for and the timing of the construction of a future school on the subject land. With consideration also being given to the timing of the development of a future plan of subdivision and the possible future servicing on the subject land and report back to a future meeting of the Planning and Environment Committee on the results of those discussions.
And you have a second for that?
I do.
I'd second any of that matter, your worship.
Seconded by Counselor Squire. Comments? Counsel Morgan.
Yes, thank you, your worship. And I appreciate that the the counselor circulated this so I could have a chance to to talk with them about it. I'm going to support the referral for a couple of reasons. First off, because it doesn't make a decision yet on the matter. And second, because it is centered around the issue with the school. And and I want to emphasize as this is in my ward, the situation at the current public schools in Ward seven. Sir Arthur Curry, which many on this council know, was built very recently, was built for five hundred and thirty-three students and will end up servicing about nine hundred and fifty students this year. They'll end up moving to I think they're going to move to seventeen portables. This was articulated in the letter. This is like this is a very serious issue. And in talking with staff, the the number of blocks of land of land available are either all taken or have been returned through the development process. And so to me, it seems like the school board has this opportunity or expropriation because their funding is actually geographically bounded to the to a specific area as well. So I I'm interested in in knowing what the school board is plans are for approaching this. I'm interested in knowing what their timelines are on this. And I'm interested in knowing if if we contemplate even proceeding with the plan with the this particular Auburn site for a school. Whether or not they desire to bring it forward early in the development process, as was done with Sir Arthur Curry or sorry, Saint Andre Basset High School. Because that was brought early and there were some challenges we faced with that being brought early with walking connections not being connected to where the students were. And I would endeavor and desire to ensure that all of those things and everything we've learned from that process is taken care of before I would even contemplate making a decision on on bringing that forward early. So I think that the dialogue is good. The report back is good. You know, on the servicing side, I'm not really stuck on that. I know, you know, engineers can pretty much figure out anything. But but the school issue is important to me. The other thing that's important to me is how a plan of subdivision would proceed and the public engagement that would be associated with that. There are impacted residents in the area who who have significant opinions on this. And I want to be clear about all the points of public engagement that would usually happen through a planned subdivision process. That those are not compromised in any significant way. Again, I haven't made my final decision on this block, but I'm certainly supportive of the counselors getting more information on these particular items and engaging with the school board. I I know it would be very easy just to throw this on the school board of the province and say they're not funded for big enough schools. But frankly, the parents in the area do not care whose problem this is. Like, and if there's something we can do to try to facilitate a discussion in the area on this land or others, then you know, I'm all for helping out in some way. Those are my comments and I appreciate the motion.
Thanks very much. Counselor Turner.
Thanks, your worship. I have a few questions. I had an opportunity to review the file and talk with the board as well. I'm not comfortable with the recommendation as it stands. I think Deputy Mayor Morgan identifies a few of those key points in the discussion and those are specifically around how does the board avail itself of land in order to develop and and get a school in a much needed site? That's it's the number one question. But that is not the central discussion around this application. I think the board is being leveraged, unfortunately, and a little bit unfairly. I think the the discussion needs to be around how do we get opportunities for the school board to find parcels of land, whether that's through development application processes and identifications of parcels as they're being brought forward or draft plan of subdivisions or expropriation. The challenge is the timing. The when draft plans are coming forward, often we see draft plans developed to ten, twenty years in advance of a neighborhood actually coming to fruition, which is far in advance of a of a school needs study being conducted to figure out when you're going to need students and facilities to be able to accommodate the students in the new developments. So instead, we're left right now where the board is kind of scrambling because it just got approval to be able to develop in this area. And as Deputy Mayor Morgan, it's kind of landlocked and identified in those areas. But this isn't an approved parcel for development. And so it kind of subverts the entire planning process. When it's being anchored and pivoted around the school needs, which is really unfortunate because I I think it's it's not fair to put the school board in that position. That they're being leveraged to try and and change rules for planning. Because environmental studies are required. This land was was billed as open space to accommodate cemetery. And now the cemetery wants to be able to sell its land as developable because they see it as surplus. In in the OMB hearing, the cemetery successfully argued that there wasn't enough land to develop a cemetery within the urban growth boundary. And so the OMB found that that land and the the urban growth boundary could be extended to accommodate the cemetery. Not developable lands. That wasn't the the purpose of it. And now that the the ownership wants to switch, what's a way to leverage into that? Well, we need a school there too. And we'll offer some of that land. So I I would ask, I guess, for you, your worship, to staff. What would be some of the options available to the school board as we explore opportunities to find land for them to be able to develop a school in the Northwest? That might and I and is it appropriate that that's independent of the application for this parcel?
Not sure if I take that to Mr. Kotsfuss. Mr. Yeoman, please help me out there.
I could start. We've got Mr. Yeoman and Mr. Barrett on the line. We had had some preliminary conversations early on about school board needs in in this area. And this is one of the sites that they were identified as well as as Counselor Morgan mentioned, there is the ability to appropriate possibly in other areas. I think I'll defer to Mr. Yeoman about the application and maybe Mr. Barrett about the the school board needs and planning within the within these areas.
Let's start with Mr. Yeoman's and as we need to, Mr. Barrett.
Forgive me, your worship. I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Barrett on this.
Okay, then it's whack a mole. Let's go to then, please. Mr. Barrett, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you, dear worship. I think it's both Mr. Kotsfuss and and the deputy mayor mentioned, there are other options. And I think that's actually one of the reasons for the referral is that we can actually sit down with the board and discuss what some of those options might be. The primary reason and and the deputy mayor also spoke to it is that there is the issue of timing and and we want to ensure that the board understands the issues of timing if council is to decide at some point in the future that these lands are appropriate for development and would be appropriate to be considered through a plan of subdivision. It's still a number of years before you would actually be able to get shovels in the ground. So that's actually a large part of the conversation that we want to have with the board. Get a better sense of what their timing needs truly are. How that all sits and and how that can be accomplished. And if, in fact, this is the only way or the only site where that can be accomplished. So with respect to sites that might be available, I think that that's something that will will sort of reveal itself as we have some discussions and confirm with the board exactly what their needs are. There are, as yet, undeveloped lands that are partway through planning approvals processes within the area, including within the Fox Hollow subdivision of the Fox Hollow Land south of of Fancha or Sunningdale, sorry. And so the the referral will give us the opportunity to have those discussions and just confirm, in fact, the timing issues and and where that all sits with the board's needs.
Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, through you, your worship. So that that does raise a few questions. Is that is something that staff would desire as an alternative because it seems to kind of presuppose that this ends up being the development parcel. The recommendations in in reading the report seem to point towards going through in a stepwise process to to do the land studies and and the secondary plans. There might be opportunities as as that as you have independent discussions with the board, perhaps not directly associated with this application at this time to say, how can we help accommodate that and work with the applicant? The the refusal at this point is just basically recognizing that we don't have those prerequisite documents and and process in place in order to make those approvals. So is is this something that that you would prefer as a course of action? Or are there other options to be able to look at all opportunities on the table rather than just this parcel?
Prefer is an interesting word when it comes to staff recommendations, but go ahead, Mr. Barrett, please.
Yeah, through your worship, there's a staff recommendation already in front of you, which was the refusal of the specific application. This, in fact, is to go to exactly as the counselors indicating, which is, are there other options and what are options outside of this parcel? That might be available to the board to provide for their needs. But as it relates to this particular parcel, also confirming with the board, in fact, if it this parcel was to come forward, there are a lot of steps and I don't know that the board is fully apprised of what those steps are and what those considerations would be before this site could even be on their radar screen. So that's part of the conversation is to say, these are the constraints on this site. Staff has not recommended that it be included. If council were to direct that the lands be included, there are many, many steps that take a long time to get to and through before development could potentially occur on these lands. So it is primarily focused at what other opportunities might there be to meet the school board's needs.
Counselor Turner.
Thank you. As I was reading this, I was trying to figure out what the the best course of action would be. And and the referral is really speaks to the applicant's wishes rather than than how do we accommodate, which is to define the areas that would be set aside for urban growth and define the areas that would be set aside for agricultural growth and agricultural preservation. The boundary that was ultimately drawn for London, given that it was drawn back in nineteen ninety-six is showing that it's probably closer to about a fifty year growth boundary. And that's part of the issues that we've had is that we've had so much land that it's gone all around the city. And we have some areas of the city where, in fact, we're pushing up and close to the boundary, but other areas of the city where there's sufficient lands. And so the whole notion of whether or not there are sufficient lands to accommodate growth is based on the quantum of what's available citywide, not what's available in the northwest or the northeast or the southeast, but what's available citywide. And up until now, we've been running with quite a I would say pad on our supply of of sufficient lands, but we are getting close where we're going to have to make that examination. But at the outcome of that examination, it would be a boundary that would be identified to accommodate twenty years worth of growth. And lands inside would be set aside for development and the lands outside would be preserved for agriculture. But again, the counselor also raises a good point because among the considerations of where do you draw that lines is avoiding primac lands. And in the case of London, that's a pretty difficult exercise because all of the lands surrounding London are primac lands. So that becomes a balance that council has to consider at that point, and that'll be a few years down the road.
Counselor Holst.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that thoughtful response from staff. I will say that I remember attending school in a portable back in back in the seventies. And so it's it's too bad we haven't been able to to solve that problem. Or at least get get ahead of it. But I'm I'm sure these discussions will be fruitful in in one way or another. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to Counselor Cassidy. I know, by the way, Counselor Lehman, I see your hand up. You made some comments when you made the referral. I'll let you do a wrap on that. Go ahead, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I have a question. I know this referral references servicing of the land. So I did want to ask staff that if something and we do know how long subdivisions generally take to go through the whole process, but if if it were built the way it looks, if you look on the map right now, there's literally literally nothing built around it right now. So who does pay the cost to service this land to get the appropriate services out there for the homes that would theoretically be built there?
Mr. Barrett.
Sorry, through your worship, I'll punt that one back to Mr. Yeoman.
Punted away. Go ahead, Mr. Yeoman.
Through your worship. So to answer the counselor's question, it would be a bit of a combination of situations. In a normal situation, major infrastructure is provided by the city to service the lands. In this case, we don't have plans for major sanitary service in particular for these lands to the north. There is a sanitary outlet that is available, but it requires a pumping station and a force main, not a gravity connection. Generally, we're trying to have gravity connections going forth for all of our sanitary land. So we would have to contemplate in a future study, the the servicing of these lands for the broader area. The private the pumping station, though, and the force main would be provided by the developer. However, the city's policy framework for temporary servicing discourages temporary servicing unless they're supportable when the ultimate solution is known. And right now, we don't know the ultimate sanitary servicing solution for the lands. The water servicing for the lands still needs to be studied at this time. There may be some capacity going forward. But the lands haven't been considered in our water servicing studies to date for that. And for stormwater, we do have a stormwater pond that the lands could avail of. However, we need to work through the issues of having the the services cross over Sunningdale Road as they go forward. Engineers, of course, could of course come up with servicing solutions on anything. It's just a matter of timing and cost and working through details through a subdivision process.
Thank you. Actually, I think, Mr. Barrett, you meant to say pass the puck as opposed to punt the ball in light of the season. So go ahead, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. So if if council were to give approval to for this developer to go ahead with their plans here, would we have to speed up? Plans? Would that affect other plans? Would infrastructure that we have planned in other areas for development that is happening there? Would things be have to be juggled and moved around?
Mr. Yeoman.
Through your worship. Not necessarily to answer the question. We do have some works that are coming online within the next few years. It would mean that the lands couldn't proceed immediately, but they could be within the period that we could consider through the subdivision review process. The sanitary issue, though, is is the key issue going forward. We have had challenges in the past with private pumping stations in Southwest, for example, where we have to deal with things like operating costs and agreements related to that without knowing when the long term services are going to be provided. So that can get into some definite challenges there.
Counselor.
Thank you. So I I'm I'm on the fence right now about this referral. I do think it's important to to have these conversations with the school board. Absolutely. I think the bringing in this argument that that London is has this housing shortage is is it's a false argument in this particular case. There's a ton of development going on in Ward five along Sunningdale Road between Richmond and Adelaide Street. That development has been approved. Most of it has been approved or it's actually in the process. So those all those homes will come online well in advance. And we're talking thousands of units well in advance of anything going up on this site. And this is serviced lands or lands that have servicing available to be connected to. This is true sprawl. If you look at it, it is the furthest west and the furthest north in the city that you can go. And yes, technically, it's in the urban growth boundary, but is specifically in the urban growth boundary for a cemetery. It was not contemplated for residential development. What happens when we when we allow this kind of sprawl to continue as it's continued for decades in London is you see schools like Lorne Avenue School get closed. Because that neighborhood empties out because young families are able to buy houses more cheaply way out on the outskirts of town. And we continue through policies that we have continued in the past to encourage that kind of development and to make it as cheap as possible for developers to build those kinds of homes, which contributes to the emptying out of our core. And then you have schools closing down. What happened immediately after they closed down Lorne Avenue Schools, they had to build an addition. Oh, and I can't remember the name of the school, but it's the one on Quebec and Oxford Street. They had to build, we had to, we had to give zoning permission to build in addition to that school because all of a sudden families were starting to what that's what happens in neighborhoods. There's rejuvenation. There's rejuvenation. Families were starting to move back in there. And now, all of a sudden, Lorne Avenue School was closed. The kids had to go somewhere. So I agree with conversations with the school board that they are essential. We do have to work together, doing our planning in conjunction with school board needs and do a much better job than has been done in the past. There's a reason for inward and upward. There's a reason for developing in already built-up areas because it costs us millions of dollars, probably more than millions, probably in the billions, to service those areas that are way far out. And it costs us in smog. And I'm not even talking about climate change. I'm talking about quality of life for Londoners. The more cars that there are on the road, the more smog that there is in the air, and we are all breathing that matter that's in the air. LTC has to extend their service out there. It costs us money through LTC. It costs us money in snowplows. It costs us money in soft services like libraries and things like that. All of that has to be made available to these people that will now be living in the furthest reaches of the city. So I'll wait to hear further, although I think Counselor Lehman is next and he's going to wrap up. So like I said, I agree with more conversations. I don't agree with referral if it's a matter of just delaying a decision so that the developer can get what he wants. Because I'm not sure what this developer wants is necessarily in the best interest of all Londoners.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Counselor Squire?
I just have a point of order, and I have to correct something that the counselor just said because I read the O M B decision. I went through it and read it. And the O M B in their decision did not say that the land was being approved within the urban growth boundary for use as a cemetery. In fact, they specifically said that they were not doing that, and they were including it in the urban growth boundary for other purposes. And it did not require in their decision for them to make a finding it was needed for a cemetery. I want to make that crystal clear because I read the decision, and that's what it says. So to say it was wholly dealing with cemetery is incorrect.
Sorry, go ahead.
Point of order.
Okay, well, I just heard one point of order, which sounded like a point of clarification.
He's not making a point of order. He is making debate and argument. He's arguing with my, my point that is not a point of order. A point of order is an error in process, not following the rules of council. That is not a point of order.
So noted, then. Counselor Squire feels his point of clarification is made. Counselor Lehman, for a wrap-up, please.
Thank you. So today, we've touched on a lot of things. We've touched on urban sprawl. We've touched on the frustration of some schools closing for lack of population growth there for young families and other schools opening at the other end. We've touched on urban growth boundaries. Before I get into my comments, I'd just like to go to staff because we've had a discussion of time length, et cetera. When a ward or city has to expropriate land for purposes of building a school, how long is that process generally?
Well, I'm not sure if Mr. Yeoman or Mr. Barrett wants to tackle that. One of you can decide, though, by the way.
Through the mayor, I don't know that either of us can comment on the time of expropriation of another board of commission. Sorry.
Thank you. Counselor?
My, I can't comment either because I don't have that knowledge. But my guess is that it's no small thing. You know, what I do know, being a ward counselor in the West End with this area just north of our ward boundary is the incredible amount of young families have moved into this area. And here we have a school that's designed for 500 pupils, and they're at 900 with 17 portables on the property. In my opinion, this is not a healthy environment for the best education possible. I know, my kids, we were in a relatively new area, and my kids were in portables. My concern is, and I saw this firsthand, is the delay and the delay and the delay to address this. You could have a person having their child go into kindergarten and potentially see the possibility of many years in elementary schools being spent in a portable. So I think, you know, sure, it'd be great if the province funding came at the right time with the school board. So all this could be planned, you know, in a proper, well-thought-out manner. But that's not where we are today. Where we are today is we have an extreme lack of available schooling, not just with, you know, one site desperately needed, but I have the feeling there's going to be additional sites required in the coming years. We have a potential property that is within the urban growth boundary. What I think we owe the parents and the students in this area is at least to further, fully investigate the pros and cons of going down whatever path we eventually go down. This referral is not a decision, yes or no. All it is is getting staff and the school board to have that conversation now, understanding that time is not on our side here. It's still going to be a number of years before we get, you know, a school built. I understand that. But we want to reduce the number of years until that happens. So I encourage my colleagues to support this referral so that when we make our decision, we can have the best information at hand. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll call the vote. This is on the referral.
Counselor Helmer? Sorry, Counselor, you were muted when you responded. Counselor Helmer? Oh, you have it now. Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries, ten to four.
Thank you, Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We'll now move on. Point three on the planning agenda. This matter was approved at council, but I know Counselor Hopkins has a motion that she wishes to bring with regard to this.
Why don't we turn to you then, Counselor Hopkins, please?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I did send, or the city clerk sent out the proposed amendment that I would like to bring forward. I do have a secondor in Counselor Cassidy for this amendment. And this is a public participation, site plan, public participation meeting that we had at planning. And as you could see, the comments are listed in the, in the recommendation. But given the concerns that exist in the community for landscaping and for privacy, I would like to add a clause be that speaks to those concerns and that the landscape architect for the applicant and the city's landscape architect continue to work with the trees in this area. This is a 21-unit townhouse complex right next to an open space four, open space five, just off of Colonel Talbot. It is, there are residential homes around this area, and it is really important to note the need for landscaping where possible as well as for the privacy and the boundaries that will delineate the homes to the townhouses. So I'm hoping colleagues will support this added request to continue working through the site plan process to look at privacy and boundary trees.
Thanks very much. Vin Duli, seconded, Counselor Cassidy. That was a yes from you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the amendment to this motion? Let's call the questions.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. Now I'll turn your attention to the motion as amended, but that will require a mover and a secondor, please. Moved by Counselor Squire, seconded by Counselor Cassidy. Any other comments or questions? Let's call that vote.
Mr. Mayor?
First time ever.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
Sorry about that. Thanks very much, Counselor Squire.
Except to say, go haves.
Yes, I will. For those who are otherwise so bent, as is my son-in-law, you'll see another dress he wore from the chair of the Planning and Environment Committee. Thanks very much for your report. Now I'll turn your attention, colleagues, to the report of the Community Protective Services of Colin Counselor Helmer, please.
Thank you. Counselor Pelosi has indicated she has a peonery interest in item nine, which is 2.8 from the original report, an integrated subsidized transit. So we should pull that. I'm happy to put everything else on the floor. I haven't heard from anybody else that they want anything pulled. And I will say, we refer to communication from a number of students who were involved in the Community Engaged Learning Project with lifespan to item 2.4, which is the property standards bylaw. And I wanted to commend the group for their work on that project and obviously lifespan for their continued advocacy on behalf of tenants on this issue.
Does anyone wish to have any other item dealt with separately? Seeing none, dealing with all the issues in the eighth report of Community Protective Services with the exception of item 2.88, excuse me, any comments or questions? Counselor Squire?
I just want to follow up on the issue of lifespan. I really appreciated the input that they had. I think it's great to see a community organization that's really passionate about a particular issue and is also bringing us real evidence and real stats on those particular issues. And I don't think they should ever be hesitant in doing that. And I know they won't be through their executive director. I think that one of the biggest things about enforcement in the city is having the community understand how enforcement works, what it does. And I think engagement, whether we like it or don't like it, I think we have to accept it, and I think we have to use it to make these things work better.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
Counselor Helmer?
I'll put item two, integrated subsidized transit agreement, bringing together a number of programs into one program, which is going to be simplifying things for the city and also for London Transit Commission.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, thirteen with one recused.
Counselor Helmer?
That's it for me.
Thanks very much. We appreciate that very much. I'll now turn your attention to the eighth report of Corporate Services Committee and Counselor Cassidy, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will put the entire report on the floor except for item eight, which is 2.6 from the committee agenda, and I have not heard from anybody else yet.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any other item dealt with separately? Counselor Turner?
Thank you. If I could have 2.1 and 2.2, I guess, two and five.
2.5 being the report on development charges reserve fund?
Am I looking at the right one? I'm looking at eighth report of Corporate Services. 2.1 is Integrity Commissioner Agreement and 2.5 being, oh, sorry, there's, I'm reading this wrong, five is 2.2 Council Compensation Review Task Force.
All right, so we're talking then, colleagues, in terms of dealing with all issues with the exception of 2.1, the Integrity Commissioner Agreement, the 2.2, the 2021 Council Compensation Review Task Force, and 2.6, selected officials and appointed citizen members remuneration. Any other items? Seeing none, any discussion on those items with the exception of the three that will be dealt with separately? Seeing none, we'll call the question on all but those three items.
Counselor Lehman? Closing the vote and the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll put number two, which is 2.1 from the committee report, and it's the Integrity Commissioner Agreement.
I'm just going to stop. Counselor Turner, I think you had this pulled. Did you wish to have a comment on that then?
I did. I just wanted to vote on it separately.
I see. Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, we will call the question now.
Counselor Hopkins? Closing the vote and the motion carries, twelve to two.
Counselor Cassidy?
Step is number five or 2.2 from the committee agenda, the Council, 2021 Council Compensation Review Task Force. Counselor Turner also pulled that one.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions? Counselor Turner, is that a hand up or? Yes, thank you.
To have my apologies because I haven't fully digested this, if I might, through you, Your Worship, to staff or to the chair. Just why now do we need to do this, given that we've, in the last round, we had a fairly strong recommendation, I think, to index this and allow that to kind of be deep politicized? Is this a requirement at this point that we do so to strike the task force or is it a recommendation?
Assess the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, yes, this is in response to direction that was given to staff by council at the end of the last review, which was to bring it forward for review again prior to the next election.
Counselor Turner?
Thanks. That's helpful. I see the, when we made that recommendation, thanks for refreshing my memory, amendment, clerk, that in doing so, I mean, it needs to be revisited from time to time. I felt fairly comfortable with the recommendation that was made at the time. The challenge is it's a fairly significant amount of work. The recommendation, if we were unsatisfied with the recommendations that were made through the last review and hadn't created an indexing clause associated with that, then I think it would probably be incumbent on us to do a revisit of the council compensation framework. But at this point, we're not, well, personally, I'm not dissatisfied with what that recommendation was at the last pass. And I think it can carry, and I'm comfortable with its standing rather than going through all the significant work that's associated with it, unless council is taking a look at fairly significant change in structure composition and unless council is taking a look at fairly significant change in structure composition and the way we do business. But I think that two conversations haven't really met each other yet. And so either this is premature or it's divorced from the conversation that needs to happen in order to get there. And so I'm not really supportive of it at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Homer?
Thank you. I wanted to ask through the mayor, just about the timing for the review. I know that one of the recommendations from the task force last time was that we had the review completed basically a year before nominations start happening for the next term of council, and I went to wondering about the timing, whether you think that there's enough time to get the work done by the committee and the task force?
Let's ask the clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Through the terms of reference for this review, I was recommending a much scaled-down review, which is, would basically mean looking at the most recent median full-time employment income data for Londoners. So it's a very scaled-down review. I'm not recommending a wholesome, a full, fulsome look at everything. In fact, I'm having some difficulties in having the former members willing to come back. So, you know, there's also a possibility that you could just direct our staff to undertake that review based on the previous recommendation and report back on what that would look like without going through a full task force and having a task force called.
Counselor Homer? Any other comments or questions then? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 2.
Counselor Cassidy?
On this item, the, there was a submission for the elected officials and appointed citizen members. So it's item 2.6 from the committee agenda. So that was just received for information, and the committee voted against the motion that Counselor Kaibaga and I had put on the floor. So I'm wondering if it's in order, and I threw you to the clerk to add, so we're receiving this information, and I wonder if I can do a B, which is my original motion that I put on the floor at the committee.
That might well be contrary, but let's ask the clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I had to pull the clause there. I do not believe it would be contrary, because the motion that's on the floor is just to receive the report and the communication, so you could put an amendment on to add a B, in my opinion. But of course, it's up to council.
That's what I'd like to do, your worship.
I actually trust the clerk's opinion versus my own from time to time on such matters. Do you have wording for that, Madam Chair?
Your worship, it is on the committee report that I just had, and then I just closed it off. There it is. That notwithstanding the provisions of the council policy, remuneration for elected officials and appointed citizen members, the remuneration for elected officials and appointed citizens, no increase to the remuneration for elected officials or appointed citizens be made for 2021. It being noted that the Corporate Services Committee received a communication dated May 7, 2021, from Counselors Homer, Cassidy, and Kaibaga with respect to this matter. So I will move that and I'll look for a seconder, and then I would speak to it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order.
Yes, please.
Thank you. At committee, when we went through this, I questioned if we needed to simply receive, as the report would be to proceed as per the policy, or if I needed one to receive this and authorize the payout increase as a report had noted to be done and was told what was before us is, would have done it, and I didn't need to have two parts. So questioning which was actually right, which we did at committee or where we find ourselves today?
Let's go back for the clerk for an opinion.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The council policy authorizes staff to move forward with the increase. So by receiving the report, it's also authorizing the increase in accordance with the policy, because the policy already provides that authorization to staff. So what you were, you're hoping to achieve or had suggested to achieve had been, can be achieved by just receiving the staff report, because the policy authorizes the increase unless there's a motion by council to not authorize the increase.
Is that clear? Counselor Pelosi?
Somewhat. Personally, I view this as contradictory to what come out of committee, but I'll leave it to the clerk's judgment.
Well, that's why I did feel it was contrary too, and so we'd have to either vote down the recommendation and deal with this separately. But clerk, you feel that this, and I'll be guided by council, but I don't want an extended discussion on this if we could, unless you feel it's appropriate. But clerk, can I ask you just to retune your thoughts on that, not to change them, but just to give us clarity again around what you just said?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my advice is basically the same, but I also understand Counselor Pelosi's point that if by receiving it, you're improving it, then adding a B is contrary to that. So I'm going to change my mind based on that information and my advice to you, and suggest that perhaps it is contrary.
That would have been my view as the Chair, that this, it's directly contrary to what was supported at committee. So with that, if you would like to make an amendment to Counselor Cassidy, which you've done, but I'm going to just let you, give you the floor for a moment here. Before you talk to it, I just want to be clear. You're still looking to put that on the floor.
Well, if it's contrary, then the clerk is telling me that I can't put it on the floor. Well, the question is, we would have to defeat this motion, and then...
That's, that would be, that's my interpretation. So with that, I'll take a speaker's list.
So I would like to speak to this, Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead.
So obviously, people are not comfortable voting on the motion that I would like to bring forward. It's what we do every year. We have to vote on our compensation. It is in the policy, but it has to come forward by law as a report every year, and we have to endorse the policy basically every year. My concern, and it would have been the concern if we were looking at a 10% increase to our remuneration or a 0.1% increase to our remuneration, the size does not matter. There are people in our community who have lost their businesses. There are people in our community who have lost their jobs. There are people in our community who are waiting to go back to work, but with the current lockdown, they cannot. And I don't think it's appropriate for us to take an increase, no matter how small, no matter how large. I think we need to stand in solidarity with the people in our community who are suffering. And so I will vote against the committee recommendation if that is the only way for me to get my motion on the floor, and I would urge colleagues to follow suit, because I think we need to let the people in our community know that we hear them, we feel their suffering, and what small thing we can do to show support to them, I think we should.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thanks, your worship. I can certainly appreciate intent of the motion that was brought forward to committee. I support where the committee headed with it at the end of the day. And one of the reasons was, as I talked about the previous item, was that a fair amount of discussion and deliberation went into trying to figure out how to, one, depoliticize the compensation for counselors. This will always be a circumstance that we have to face. And by indexing it against the household or the income, the average income, that allowed us to be able to, to kind of rise and fall with how the city went too. So the same economic factors that impact council compensation are the same factors that impact employment across the city and how people are faring. I know it's very sensitive. I know that the optics of council compensation will always be bad. It will never be good. And so trying to take it out of a council debate and deliberation by pegging it to something that is an economic indicator of the health of the city, I think is the best way to take it out of our hands, put it into something that's tangible and measurable, and is quite appropriate. So I can't support the motion. I'm always cognizant that anything that we do with our compensation will be self-serving in either circumstance, whether we freeze it, decrease it, or increase it. It will always be seen as self-serving. There's no way about, around that. And so let's follow the recommendations that, again, the frustration I have with every time we strike the council compensation task force and then ignore their recommendations, that's one of the reasons why I was not supportive of the idea of striking another council compensation task force, for us to only ignore their recommendation again, despite the hours of work they put into all that. So I think it's respectful to the process. It's respectful to the people of London and appropriate for us to maintain what the policy has decided.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So this, as much as I appreciate Counselor Turner's comments on this one, I agree, the task force, starting that up again, not having the availability to even do that, I have great concerns about moving forward with that. And then with the recommendations coming forward from that task force, how do, how do we support that and sort of keep, sort of keep us out of the mix?
So sorry, I, you're, I think you're combining two things, and I just want to be clear.
I know I am, but I'm just going back to the previous recommendation that I didn't support, and I feel like I want to clarify that. I was not at corporate to hear the conversation, but I know when this motion came forward last year, it wasn't a conversation at all. We, most of us, supported it. I am unsure why we would not do this again. We are still in COVID, and this is something that we can still do and show some sort of, show some compassion or companionship with Londoners and what they're experiencing. I know other municipalities have done it. I agree, Counselor Cassidy, size does not matter. If it's $2 or $2,000, that's not the point. The point is, why would we not do that? So if I can have an explanation from any of the members why we would not do this, I'm just at a loss.
They're not required to respond to that, but certainly...
Okay, that explains...
No, I, no, no, that's not fair, Counselor Hopkins. I would say that there's, certainly, we've got the minutes, and there's ample opportunity for any and all of us to speak to colleagues, but I'm very mindful of any potential for aspersions, but I'll let you carry on if you wish.
That's all I've got to say.
Thanks very much. I have Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. And I'm going to speak only to the committee recommendation that's on the floor. If that's defeated and another motion comes forward, then I may have some more to say. But about a month or so ago, maybe six weeks now, a motion to send council operations to governance working group for a review was something that came onto the floor. And because it had compensation in it, I heard arguments, including from members tonight, who are saying, while notwithstanding our policy and the council compensation task force, I heard arguments then, oh, we've got to take council compensation out, because that's the compensation task force's job. So let's stick with council compensation task force reviews, recommendations, and let's follow through on this. Let's not throw it out. Counselor Turner's absolutely right. This is always going to be a political football of sorts. And I agree with him when he says the best way to do this, and whether or not I think the compensation task force has to review its recommendations or not apart, I think that by having this as part of an independent group and then following through on their recommendations, rather than ignoring them, is the best way to go. So I'm going to encourage colleagues to support the committee recommendation on this.
Thank you. Counselor Enholst?
Thank you, your worship. And if I may, through you to staff, could they, again, answer the question, how much money will this, how much will this make a difference financially for the city, this change?
If the clerk has those numbers, is she?
Through the Chair, it's Ms. Burbone. It's approximately $7,800 in total.
Counselor Enholst?
Okay, thank you. I guess the question of the size, does that matter? In a Godzilla movie, I think they said size matters. So in this case, this is, this is small. And trying to look at this from just a citizen's point of view, if we're paying council an extra 0.7%, I would be content if they did 0.8% better job. That would, that would be fine. And seeing that for many of our counselors, they're now two years into this without an increase, there's certainly the experience they've had will make up for that. And I would hope that that difference, this small amount, you know, would leverage itself over the billion-dollar budget that we have. So I don't, you know, I don't see this as a problem, and I hope that we try to do things to help the residents of London get something similar. So I too think it's, this is always an uncomfortable situation. And really, it's more of the, right now, it's more the ideological and emotional arguments that are at play against the really practical argument of the easiest thing to do is base the salary on a London metric and then provide a London increment for it. That's pretty smart. That was a smart way to deal with it. And again, we've kind of circumvented that, and now we have to have this discussion. And this is, as was said, is going to come up every time. And when we do the next review, perhaps we can come up with some way to avoid this happening. And maybe that's just baked into the first, the first year. We figure out, okay, well, what's, what are they likely to make each year, and then we'll pick the center point of that and say that's what you're going to get all four years. There's no change and there's no discussion. Except, but I do have this question through you to our staff. If we actually did that and said that counselors make the same amount every year, would we still get this report coming back to us saying, this is how much counselors make? Do you want there to be a change?
That might be a moot question, since that's not the situation. Ma'clerk, I'll let you try to handle that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We could certainly include indexing or ask the Council Compensation Review Task Force to consider non-automatic indexing based on a figure every year, and then we wouldn't need this specific report. However, under the Municipal Act, finance is required to report out annually on any expenses and salaries being given to counselors. So we'd still report out, but not ask for permission.
Thank you. Counselor Enholst, anything else?
Okay, thank you. So it seems like we may, we may always have this discussion. So at that point, I'll just support the committee recommendation, because that's what I did previously.
Thanks very much. I see no other speakers. So with that, Counselor Homer?
Thank you. So if we...
Thank you. So if we follow the policy this year, we will hit 50% compliance with the policy. And if we don't, we'll drop down to 40% compliance with the policy. That's over the last several years. Going back, I think to 2014, maybe just before that. And so usually we don't follow the policy is the point I'm trying to make. And you know, the policy allows for a couple of things. One is look at these two numbers and see which one has gone down or gone up the least and then use that one. You know, so I think it's got restraint built into it, which is like, look, if the labor index is higher than the CPI, we're not going to increase it by the labor index. We're going to increase it by CPI. We want to choose the lower number. And there's a provision in there to not have an increase, and the provision is when non-union staff wages are frozen. And there have been situations in the past when that has happened, where management staff, for example, have got no increases. And in those circumstances, also councillors, if you follow the policy, don't get an increase. And the mayor doesn't get an increase either. And I think that there's an element there of solidarity, solidarity with the non- union management staff, recognizing that for whatever reason, generally speaking, financial restraint and economic situation that's making increases to management staff salaries not wise or very difficult. We go without an increase. And I think generally the policy is good. Increase it by inflation. That's smart. I think the general practice of picking the median income was a big improvement over what we had before. And then adjusting it by inflation from that point on. We're not really in normal circumstances. Right? And so I think this is one of those circumstances where you say, you know what? We're not going to increase it by inflation. Last year, I thought it was a very good reason because I thought we were in a very high period of uncertainty. Really didn't know what was going to happen. We were in a very bad financial situation. And definitely restraint was was needed at that time. Now things are a bit more clear. I think the fiscal situation of the city is a lot more clear. And I'm less concerned now than I was last year when we decided to not have an increase than I am now. But I do think it's still a very bad situation, and it's just not the time to be increasing the wages for councillors, the salary for councillors. I I just think we should leave it the way it is. The status quo is fine. We're going to have to increase it sometime in the future because we're going to have to catch up with inflation. There's going to probably be an adjustment. When we look at the median income, it could be up, could be down, depending on how things are going in the economy. And I think we'll have to do that at that time. But right now, I just don't think an increase is a good idea. I obviously do not agree with the idea that voting against receiving the report is necessary. But since that is the ruling of the mayor and nobody challenged it, I'm going to vote against receiving the report. Hopefully, we have another motion that's on the floor.
Thank you. I see no other comments. I do. Councillor Van Meurbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I think those of us who would be saying an increase at this time would be first to admit that this is largely symbolic. But the fact of the matter is that most of us in leadership positions
Councillor Van Meurbergen, could I just ask you to check your volumes there because you're breaking in and out and I'm just, we're just a little challenged to hear that as as complete sentences.
Is that better or?
That's better. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you again, Mayor. What what I started to say, what I was beginning to speak to is for those of us who are not in favor of taking an increase at this time, I think most of us would readily agree that this is largely symbolic. But most of us in leadership position, particularly those of us who are put in office directly by the public, these these symbols or the use of symbols is very important and and from time to time very poignant. And I would suggest that especially at this time, this place, this position in the pandemic, it makes sense for us to show solidarity and empathy with the people who put us here. It shows that we understand where we're at right now. And taking an increase, no matter how small, is not warranted at this time, in my view. And again, it's largely symbolic, but symbols are important, especially right now.
Thank you. I see no other speakers. We will call the question.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, councillor.
I'm just wondering if this is the the motion before the one that councillor Cassidy had put forward?
No, this is not councillor Cassidy's amendment. This is the recommendation from committee.
So wouldn't her amendment come before the motion since she proposed one already?
No, I I had already ruled that her motion was contrary to the committee motion. So if this fails, then we can deal with councillor Cassidy's motion. If it passes, it passes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just have to ask again, just because councillor Cassidy's name is on the motion and if she is not for this motion, I'm just wondering if there's a contradiction in her moving the motion if she's intending on voting against it.
No, she's allowed to put it on the floor as the chair and not support it.
Okay, thanks.
Closing the vote and the motion carries eight to six.
Thank you, colleagues. Councillor Cassidy, is that it?
Your worship.
Thank you very much. I'll now look to the seventh report of civic works. Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. We had a good civic works committee meeting, in my opinion. We have no advance notice to pull anything from committee or from council. Our highlights, just as everyone switches agendas, is Digman Creek Popping Station construction tender, which is going to allow for capacity growth in the South End, including the Maple Leaf Plant and some redundancies in infrastructure to help with water protection. We had a regular tree supply on this agenda, which is going to be accounted for in a better caliper of trees and hopefully lower tree mortality as the city seeks to do its tree campy coverage. And the cycling advisory committee had asked committee for two motions in regards to a Masonville secondary planned, some work to be done, and a pump track. So that's included in your agenda today. So I have no advance notice of anything to be pulled, but if anyone would like anything, please do so now.
I'm sorry, councillor, I was just.
Yeah, I believe councillor Van Meurbergen wishes for something to be pulled.
All right, then colleagues, it's all on the it's.
No, I think Paul wants something pulled.
Yes, no, I I I understand. Thank you, councillor Pelosi. Anyone wish to have anything dealt with separately? Councillor Van Holst.
Your worship, I I didn't ask for anything to be pulled.
Councillor Van Councillor Van Meurbergen, then please. You're going to have to get closer to the mic again. Sorry, councillor.
4.1 B2 separately, please. I'd like to vote on that separately.
Does anyone wish anything else dealt with separately? Seeing none, I will entertain discussions on all items of the report with the exception of 4.1 B2. Comments or comments or questions? Under the advice of count of of clerk, we will pull 4.1 and deal with that separately. Thank you. Seeing none, let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you. I'll now put 4.1A on the floor, and that will have to do with civic administration, working with the cycling advisory committee in regards to the Masonville Secondary Plan.
Comments or questions? Then we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Councillor Pelosi.
4.1 B1 on the floor, and that's that civic administration be advised that the cycling advisory committee supports the creation of a pump track facility.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Work ahead of us for setting the new bylaw and and consideration of area plan or area ratings for development charges as well. I do think that area ratings are going to be a really important component of the next development charge bylaw in order for us to be able to to help support developments and infill and intensification and and to ensure that true cost is recognized when building and greenfield lands. So I'm looking forward to the return of that report. So once once those discussions have been had with stakeholders and recommendations are made from staff.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship, and my my thanks to all those who helped out with the London Community Recovery Network ideas. I think there was some very promising things there. I'm glad council supported them. And I suspect that we're in the midst of a massive transfer of wealth because of the COVID restrictions. And we may need in the future many more ideas, but there was some there was some very exciting ones here, and I look to see I look forward to to seeing how they turn out. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I might ask the deputy mayor to take the chair.
Sure, I'll go to the mayor.
Actually, that feels a bit odd since this is your report, but thank you very much. Colleagues, I'd like to comment on on a topic that you just heard councillor Van Holst reference, and that is the London Community Recovery Network. So essential to London as we go forward when we're working through the pandemic. I mean, today, for those who don't know, in the public, we announced some 11 new cases of COVID. Our best day like in my memory. And and I share that because while that may or may not be real in the sense of as we as numbers get reported over weekends, it just tells us how fragile certain circumstances can be as we deal with COVID. And today, as you'll know, and this is all supported, I think, through what we're trying to do in terms of this COVID recovery is that people as young as age 12 can now get their shots. But I'd like to shout give a shout out to staff, particularly Adam Thompson on the London Community Recovery Network, but all the partners who had so much to play, and then the contributors who provided those very solid recommendations for us to consider, which at a prior meeting, we were quite supportive, and I think for very good reason. So my kudos to those who put these projects in. Thanks to everyone who's had a role in participating thus far in London Community Recovery Network, and again, in particular, Mr. Thompson for his great work. We can't get this far in these challenging times with the kind of support we get from our staff. So that would be my comments, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, and I I don't have anyone else on the speaker's list, so I'll return the chair to the mayor.
Do we have any other speakers? Seeing none, we will call the vote on all items except 2.1.
Councillor Turner? Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Given the voting record is to deal with everything except for E, Ambassador's Pilot Program and H, which is authorizing the reallocation of the $100,000 of one-time funding. So I'll pull both of those things out and leave everything else in, and that would align with with those things that were unanimous and those were that were contrary. So that means I'll put everything except parts E and H on the floor.
Okay, so before we presume that, are there any other, does that satisfy those individuals who think anything else should be dealt with separately? I've got a couple of thumbs up here, a thumb and a nod. That'll work. So just clarify what you're putting on the floor, and we'll open that up to questions again, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, all parts of 2.1, with the exception of E, which is the core area Ambassador Pilot Program and H, which is the reallocation of the $100,000. Those are not in this vote. Everything else is.
Thanks very much. Any comments or questions on those items? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Deputy Mayor.
And next I'll put 2.1E, which is the core area proved as described in the above noted report on the floor for consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Councillor Homer.
I'm going to do my best to try and convince councillor Van Meurbergen to come around on this issue. Just this morning, I had a conversation with the restaurant owner on Dundas Street. She's really at her wits' end trying to figure out what she can do to get through the construction, the pandemic, the impacts from street activity on her business. We talked for about an hour about all the things the city is doing. I committed to her that I was going to do my best to convince colleagues to do everything we possibly can to help her. The problems that she's experiencing, some of them are people don't know how to get to where I am because the street's impacted, so I need people out there to kind of point them in the right direction. We need better signage. We need some people who know where things are. They can point people out, make it easier for them at a time when things are really difficult, which is the kind of thing that the ambassador program will do. She got a problem with, you know, there's garbage and litter and things that are that need to be dealt with. She doesn't have time to do it. She's got to run her business. She can't be going out in front of the store and cleaning those things up. And having an extra set of eyes out there to point those things out and flag to city staff who can come by and collect the refuse and take it away as as they would normally do, that's going to make things a bit better for her. Now, it's not going to solve all of her problems. It's just one thing. But it is something that will help. And so I want to make one last chance effort to try and convince everybody to support this program. I do think it's going to help with the specific problems that people are experiencing in the core right now, and and many of which are going to persist even after the construction project's finished and you know, the pandemic subsides, there's still going to be issues like this that the ambassador team can be helping with. I hope that people will maybe reconsider their the previous opposition to, I think, would be a program that will help people.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen to one.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, the next item is H, which is Civic Administration be authorized to reallocate the remaining $100,000 in one-time funding that cannot be spent in 2021 due to the COVID-19 impacts to other emergent opportunities aligned with the Core Area Action Plan in 2021.
Thanks very much. Any comments or questions? I see Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. I did not support this at SPPC, but through you, I do have a question to our staff. Because I've been thinking about this, I realize that there might be some opportunities. But how would the decision-making process around allocating any of these funds operate? I mean, my concern, of course, is that there's not council oversight. So how would these asks come in? What would the process be before any funding was allocated?
I believe Ms. Sher had spoken to this before, and I might go there unless Ms. Barbone is more appropriate. Ms. Sher, what do you think?
Your worship, I believe this one is me. Our intent is to have the Core Area Steering Committee make decisions related to this funding. The hope is that they will come through our discussions with the two BIAs. We meet with both of them weekly, right now on action items, and with them on strategic items monthly. And I can share an example that came up at our last weekly meeting, which was a request for a loan library, essentially, of some cleaning equipment, like pressure washers, squeegees, those sorts of things that people can use to do their vestibules. Currently not funded, a very small expenditure, but not an expenditure that could probably wait for a two to three month report cycle. So it really was about providing the accountability to the Core Area Steering Committee. We would report back out, of course, with our year-end report, and we would use our relationships with the BIAs to generate ideas that will be well-supported.
Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, just a follow-up question to that, because I am a little more comfortable hearing that it's not, you know, a unilateral, single-person staff decision that it's gonna be made through a steering committee. Would there be any eligibility requirements? Obviously, this is for the core area, so it would need to be located in the core area. But in terms of eligibility requirements, would there be any additional requirements for accessing funding allocations in terms of alignment with the strategic plan? I know it talks about emergent opportunities here, but also is there any requirement to look for other opportunities before coming to the city asking for money? So, you know, whether that's a BIA funding first or some other method of funding, what are we looking at around those kind of questions?
Ms. Sher, can you help us?
I can, your worship. Our intent would be that this would be to fill gaps that are not filled by current programs such as neighborhood decision-making or funding that's provided to the BIAs to fulfill their mandate. This would be things aligned with the Core Area Action Plan that were not contemplated as a specific action at that time. And again, we'd be looking for smaller price tag items that we could use as pilot programs. It's one-time funding, so there's certainly no ability to make long-term or capital investments from this.
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, so a final question here, then. So this does not necessarily mean that the entire $100,000 is going to be spent, then. It would have to be an ask first and then a consideration process. And if that's the case, then any remaining funds get returned to just general revenue surplus? Or how would that work with a surplus at the end?
Ms. Sher, perhaps you can clarify.
Thank you, your worship. I will try, and if I get it wrong, I'm sure Ms. Barbone will let me know. So this is operating funding that cannot be spent due to COVID impacts on the delivery of other operating work in the Core Area Action Plan. And unspent operating funds at year-end get returned to their funding source.
Counselor? Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Then we'll call the question.
Counselor Lewis? Closing the vote and the motion carries ten to four.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Morgan?
The SPPC report.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, there are no deferred matters nor inquiries of which I've been made aware, and no emergent motions. I think for the benefit of the public, what I'm going to add here is that we are going to vote on a number of bylaws. Then we'll be moving into a closed session, deal with some issues. And from there, we will then report back out in public session and then adjourn the meeting shortly after that. So with that, colleagues, I'll turn your attention to bills two forty-four through two sixty-two, with the exception of bill two forty-seven, which was the conflict declared by Counselor Pelosi regarding subsidized transit. So with that and first reading of added bill two sixty-eight, I'll look for a mover and seconder of introduction first reading. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We'll call the question.
Counselor Kaiba.
I can't open it, so I'll just vote yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Colleagues, I'm looking for a mover and seconder of secondary reading of bills two forty-four through two sixty-two, forty-seven, and added bill two sixty-eight. Do you have a mover, please? Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Any comments or discussion? And with that, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Colleagues, for third reading and enactment of bills two forty-four through two excluding bill two forty-seven and including added bill two sixty-eight, I'll require a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Van Hulst, seconded by. I saw Counselor Turner cough. I wasn't sure if that was a motion, but I saw Counselor Hopkins seconding. We'll call the vote. It's dangerous to cough on screen. Everybody sees.
Or it knocks you.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Colleagues, now for bill two forty-seven, I'm going mover and seconder for introduction and first reading. Moved by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Lewis. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen with one recused.
Thank you very much. Seven, for second reading, I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Helmer. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's call the vote.
Counselor Kaiba. Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen with one recused.
Thank you. And now for third reading, two forty-seven, I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Please moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Let's call the question.
Counselor Helmer. Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen with one recused.
Before we move into closed session, I'm gonna ask the clerk, as we always do, to share with the public the reasons for going into confidential session. Clerk, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going into closed session to discuss nine matters. A number are related to land acquisition matters. And we have one related to personnel matter and three related to litigation matters.
Thank you very much, and I'll remind the public that from there, we will come back into public session and complete our meeting. So with that, I'll look for a motion to move into confidential session. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Van Meurbergen. Let's do a show of hands, so the clerk can't see us. So show of hands, please.
And I can't see the chambers, so, but I do see that it does carry. I'm working out of my office right now.
Ah, all right. So what's the, what's the verdict, clerk?
Motion carries. I could see a majority of counsel.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we'll be just back in a few moments' time as we set up for the confidential session. Thank you.